Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the November 26th Board of Selectmen meeting. It's usually on a Thursday, but because of Thanksgiving, we pushed it up today. So thank you, everybody, for being here. See lots of old friends here in the audience. And as always, we will start the meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 14th, 2024?
Lauren Rabin, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of November 14th, 2024?
Lauren Rabin, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, going on to the first selectmen's updates.
I'm gonna do your.
No, we're gonna do it after.
Okay.
Thanks. The December 12th meeting, we're gonna be pushed, just so people know, we're gonna push it back to 1 o'clock that day. For, we have a lot of scheduling conflicts in the morning, so just to be aware of that. Barbara's House is doing a turkey giveaway tomorrow from, I think it's 10 to 12 at Byram Fire Station. So come there anytime within that two-hour period, and they'll be giving people in the community, making their Thanksgiving a little bit better. This Friday, Reindeer Festival starts off at Sam Bridge, and that is at 12. Turkey Trot is the, is at 9 o'clock on Saturday, I believe. That's over at the water there in Greenwich, Team Center. Always a fun event. There's a, I think a one-miler at 9:00 and a 5K at, I think at 10:00. So hopefully, I'll see you guys at one of those. We're beginning the process to look for a new Commissioner of DPW. You probably have seen the position posted, so I want to thank Amy Seabert for her many years of service to our town. And stay tuned for the interviews and ultimately, a new selection in January. On December 4th, our good friend Rob Guerrieri is celebrating his 30th anniversary over at Upper Crust in Old Greenwich, so we'll be over there to help Rob celebrate that. On the 4th, later that day, the prognosticators will be over there predicting in the coming year, but we certainly won't touch baseball, Ken. Political predictions, maybe, not sports anymore. I'll be also meeting with Parks and Rec at their board meeting that night to discuss the Veterans Plaza Park Memorial Project, and also to relay some concerns and advocacy from our rugby players. They're looking for more time, and I know Joe and the crew has done a great job getting fields up and running, and we have Western coming online soon, really gonna be helpful. And eventually, and Byram South Strazza Field will be, hopefully, please got a showcase baseball field that we've been trying to do since 2005. So thank you for all you're doing there and look forward to that meeting. Later that day, the Sea Scout Ceremony will all be over at Indian Harbor, December 5th. United Way Legislators Breakfast here to forum with the state delegation and myself. So if you have any questions for any of us, certainly show up there. Later that day, the tree lighting is at 4 o'clock outside. I think we have a Stanley Cup event that night, too, right? Stanley Cup's coming to Greenwich at the Bruce at 6:00. December 7th, which is the anniversary of Pearl Harbor, which people sometimes forget. We're doing the Battle of the Badges, the blood drive between the police and the fire. As the Commissioner of both, I am neutral in that one. 5 o'clock that day is first light in Old Greenwich. We're doing a special proclamation. I won't say what it is now, but it's very special for that community. And then the retired police dinner is that night, at the Knights of Columbus, at 7:00. So lots of updates. Cut a few short there because I know we have a long agenda. But before I turn it over to Lauren, I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving, wherever you're spending it. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning, everyone. I'll keep my comments brief. Last week was attending the Western Connecticut Council of Governments meeting. We were able to push forward an increase in our Lot Slip, Lot Sip Grant, can't speak today, for the North Street Bridge, based on the feedback from the community to try to complete that bridge work during the summer. So that was an emergency increase request, and it was approved by West Cog. Also, just to let my colleagues know, and Ken, I think you already sent an email today about this, that our dues to West Cog is increasing by 3%. And it was interesting to understand how dues is calculated. It's based on how big your town is land-wise, as well as population. So you could imagine in Fairfield County, we are up there, not just from a population standpoint, but from a land perspective. So some of the other members in West Cog were questioning the fairness of the dues, just based on the benefits that they get from being part of West Cog. So it's something that they'll explore in future years, and that's pretty much it. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope it's tasty and delicious.
Thanks, Lauren. And just for those who don't know, Greenwich is the second biggest landmass in the state, I think behind Monroe or Newtown. One of those is in front of us. At 63,000, we're not near the top of that, but it's still a lot, so that's why we're up there in that calculation, unfortunately. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning, and thank you. So my first update is about the Julian Curtis Building Committee.
Oh, I forgot. Oh. Well, when you're done, I have another update, sorry.
We'll go back, we'll ping pong back and forth. All right. So my update on Julian Curtis is that last week, the committee sent a letter of intent and award letter to RFJ Associates, which is also known as Tomlinson, Holly, Patterson, or THP for short, for Phase 1 and 2 of the Julian Curtis Building Project. As a reminder, Julian Curtis is pursuing a phased approach to modernizing the school, primarily focused on ADA improvements and other essential issues to bring the school up to speed rather than a complete rebuild, as was previously proposed. Phase 1 and 2, which will begin in the summer of 2025, consists of modernizing and securing the front entrance, including the administrative offices and other entrance areas, ADA improvements to the bathrooms, ADA elevator and ADA accessibility to the exterior front entrance, and an additional ADA parking space. The base budget of these two phases is $2.9 million, and the selected bidder came almost precisely in line with this base budget. The committee, along with its architects and Tenazian Associates, completed a thorough evaluation and scoping set of interviews with the three bidders who participated prior to selecting THP, a company with significant experience with the town, including with the recently completed improvements at Cardinal Stadium. The committee has begun preliminary work to design Phase 3, modernizing the cafeteria, which will upgrade and improve the currently inadequate cafeteria and kitchen in the school. This work will enable the school to no longer have six lunch sessions, beginning at 10:30 a.m. and ending at 1:30 p.m. And remember that the school day is 8 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. In addition, the redesign will address potentially noncompliant acoustics, as well as any other outstanding ADA issues, with a current cafeteria in addition to other improvements. We will have more to share on Phase 3 in the new year. Please reach out to the committee with any questions, and we appreciate the entire board's continued support for our committee.
Thank you, Janet, and I think you.
Sorry, go ahead. I've got a few more things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I got finished.
Well, while we're on schools, why don't?
So our last Board of Selectmen meeting, we saw the request to variance to the noise ordi, no, I can't even speak today, noise ordinance, so that we can start construction at Central Middle School an hour earlier. In conversations with Barbara Schellenberg on Friday, she's not sure that that's something that should come before us, because usually a variance is for the benefit and health of the community, and starting earlier may not necessarily fall into that category. So Owen, I'm not sure if, you know, you guys talked about it, but she wanted to look into it some more. So at the appropriate time, it'll be coming up in front of us to either disposition or to move forward with a public hearing.
Got it, thank you. So I, yes, I'll be very quick. I just have two more events to add. One is on December, December, sorry, Sunday, December 1st, in this Arden Cottage at Greenwich Point, if you want to learn more about climate change in Connecticut. The program begins at 2:00. It's the Fred Ellisor First Sunday Science Lecture. If you want to find out how to keep those Thanksgiving leftovers from going to waste, learn more about waste-free Greenwich by signing on to a webinar on Monday, December 2nd at 7:00. I see Julie in the audience. And I'll just finish, as my colleagues did, that as we draw closer to Thanksgiving, I find myself really grateful to all who serve our town, whether in an elected, appointed, professional, or volunteer role. So thank you. Greenwich could not be the town it is without your dedicated support.
Thank you, Janet. And of course, I forgot something, too. December 1st is the flag raising at 11 o'clock here for the, with the Albanian community, for the, raise the Albanian flag. And I don't want to forget that. So that was the first one I ever did five years ago here. So anyway, before we go on to old business, I want to make a motion to move up the approval of a new deputy chief of police to begin the meeting before old business. So if I can get a second.
Lauren Rabin, I second. She's second.
Oh. All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes. You easily don't do it this way. Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Rabin, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you so much. Okay, is Chief Heavey here? There he is.
Good morning. I appreciate you allowing me to go first, because I'm gonna try to get to a meeting. I hate being late to meetings, and I gotta drive to.
Me, too.
Meriden. Okay, well, part of my obligation, I believe, is the chief, is to prepare good succession planning for the agency as it goes forward. And we were recently with the retirement of Deputy Chief Gray, had the deputy chief, one of the two deputy chief positions open up. We had internal and external candidates to be considered, but we have come to today to make a nomination in accordance with the town ordinances to recommend Captain James Bonney for the position of deputy chief. Captain Bonney is a 33-year veteran of the department and has been recognized for lots of good works over those 33 years. He has a bachelor's degree in business management, and again, is a highly qualified candidate. So at this time, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Thank you, chief, and I agree with you. Jim Bonney has served the town well, three decades plus. We see him all the time at all events. He takes a lot of time out of his own schedule to volunteer all the time, and he just loves the community, and we're excited to support your decision. Any comments?
Yeah, we had the opportunity to also interview, and I look forward to all the great things you're gonna do for traffic and parking in town.
So I'm thrilled to congratulate DC Bonney on his well-deserved promotion. He has served Greenwich well, and I know he will continue to in his new role. Greenwich is very fortunate to be under the protection of the Greenwich Police Department. I know our community loves its police force, and in return, we owe it our support and gratitude. So not only do I want to take this opportunity to thank DC Bonney for his service, I want to extend my thanks to everyone on the force who serves. But I would be remiss if I didn't also take this opportunity to say, here we go again. Once more, my colleague and I were left out of the interview process, and as the song goes, we're not in the room when it happened. The Board of Selectmen is also the police commission, and as such, should be included in interviews for the positions of deputy chief and chief. I sincerely hope we will not be filling these positions anytime soon, but when we do, at a time far into the future, I hope we'll honor our town charter.
Thank you. Not to get into back-and-forth debate, but I believe in the chief can correct me. This, you were not required to interview. This was the police commissioner's interview. So what we did is we want, as we always do, is we allow the other selectmen, the other two, to interview whoever has been selected, if that is in fact the, in the jurisdiction and the authority of the first selectman. So we had checked on that. So if there's anything that is anybody's in disagreement with, we can certainly go back and forth on that, but no one is kept out of the process on purpose. As you know, a lot of these things in the last five years have been just the sole discretion of the first selectman, and I've opened it up to the whole board. Just recently, we just did that with a committee. So I'm always for opening it up, but sometimes the charter doesn't call for that. And so we did it, we did it the way it was, has always been done, and you did get a chance to interview.
I will add that there was an outside agency that was hired by Human Resources to vet all of the potential candidates prior to the, an assignment that they received that was evaluated and then interview process.
Yeah, thank you, chief.
So I will just say that we respectfully disagree, and certainly, under no circumstances would I want this disagreement to reflect on the promotion of.
Well, you brought it up. That's why I'm responding.
I might, again, find it upsetting to me as the chief, that I've stood here before in the same argument. I think that it might be something that the Law Department could make a final decision on, so that I don't have to be second-guessed, per se, because it's insulting to me, as the chief police, to have bloggers accuse me of violating the town charter, as has happened the last time, and that's not fair to me or to the organization, and it's a distraction to what should be a very special day for Captain Bonney.
Well, I agree that it should be a special day, and I would appeal, I don't get on social media myself, I would appeal to anyone who does to not do that. That is disrespectful, and like I said, we definitely want to honor DC Bonney on a special day.
Imagine how great it is to have an unanimous endorsement of the Board of Selectmen for your position.
And he will get that.
Yes. Chief, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Is there a motion?
Lauren Rabin, I move that we appoint Jim Bonney as our new deputy chief, or I might slip and say chief deputy.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Rabin.
So thank you, thank you, DC Bonney. I gotta get used to calling you that now. And chief, thank you so much. I know you have a busy day today, so I appreciate all you do, and safe travels, upstate. Okay, going on to old business.
Fred, just before you get to that, I just want to make sure people know that we are having internet problems, and we are not on Zoom at the moment. We're trying to reconnect.
Okay, thank you. All right, going on to old business. Michael Kisselak is here from DPW. Michael, good morning. To go over the request for the approval of the intersection modifications at Valley Road and River Road Extension in Schofield Street. Before Mike starts, I was over there in the neighborhood yesterday, visiting some of the businesses to make sure that they did receive the notification. Thank you for, again, making sure they got that. And as I was walking out of Lily's, the groomer is, I'm talking to Paul Martin, who's a lifetime Greenwich Cosco resident, and as I walked out and we're talking, guess what happened? A near miss right in front of, right in the intersection. And if that wasn't enough, right after that, and we're watching it, two other cars came right down and speeding down and took a right, going down towards Louis, speeding down that road. So I went and I spoke with a few people. I spoke with Kirsten, by the way, has really good food, if you haven't been over there. And she had some suggestions, some, just some points of clarification on this, but everybody's in agreement, something needs to be done there. But sir, I'll let you go forward, and then I'll certainly, I'll pass on some of the things I heard yesterday, and have my colleagues and anybody here in the audience who signed up to speak can certainly ask them questions.
Sure, yeah, thank you. Good morning. So we brought this, I think it was prepared too late to get into the packet, so, but we did bring an exhibit related to the parking. I don't know, can everybody see that, or is there a better place to put that, so that everybody in the room can see that?
Can anybody see it out there? Okay. As long as I can see.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, I just want to bring this back to the beginning. We're here because we were, it came up at a Board of Selectmen meeting way earlier in 2024, that this intersection of Valley, River, and Schofield has safety concerns, and so we were asked, as Public Works, to investigate that and give our opinion on what could resolve that. We did some analysis and collected data, and we proposed that always-stop control, we think, is the best solution for this. So we're proposing, we're proposing to do that, at least to try it. It's, you know, it's signage, we've understood, understand there have been concerns, but in order to even try it, we need it to be in the ordinance, so that it can be enforced. And then so with this, there obviously have been some parking concerns as well. We realized there are parking spaces in the intersection, which is something we're not supposed to have per state statutes. So we're trying to, we're also proposing an amendment with Parking Services to the ordinance to clean that up. So the exhibit here shows what the existing parking is and the proposed parking would be. It also came to our attention that there's a fire hydrant in the area, which it's actually kind of hidden behind a, you know, in some shrubs and behind a pole, so it's actually not that easy to see, and it's not marked, but we did confirm that regardless of whether or not it's marked, it is state law that you can't park within 10 feet of a fire hydrant. So I just wanted to make sure that's reflected on the graphic we have here. So, you know, I understand people probably do park there today, but it, that's more of an enforcement matter, and if fire department ever needed to be there, technically, somebody who's parked in front of the hydrant would be liable. I don't want to derail the conversation too much on the fire hydrant. But, so we tried to give it an honest before-and-after comparison, taking all that into account. We feel it would result in three spots being eliminated, and that would help greatly with the visibility of pedestrians at the crosswalks, and to kind of clear up some of the friction that might be within the intersection of people maneuvering. So that's what, that's what this shows. And then we also, on the other side of this, I'll flip it over. Again, this is something that was kind of a last-minute decision to show, because we were asked, are there other things we can, we can do, like the flashing warning lights? It is something we had looked at in the past, and I just wanted to demonstrate. This isn't something we're proposing, but this is what our analysis showed would be necessary in order to put those warning lights in somewhere that is where they're effective. So you'll see that there are curb extensions on the north side, because we don't want the warning lights to be tucked behind parking, where nobody's gonna see them, and where they're gonna be too far from the crosswalk. And then on the south side, obviously, there's that, that property has been developed the way it is for quite some time. There's actually not really a corner there with curb ramps or anything. It's kind of just an open corner. So we would need to set, set the curb out a little bit farther in order to have that RFB not just be, you know, in the road where it would be getting hit, and so it would be a little bit closer to the crosswalk. So we did, we did look at that alternative. It's not something we're proposing. We just want to be honest and say, we've heard the concerns about that, and it is something we did look at. We ultimately felt like, given the impacts to the private properties that would be there, the always-stop is the, is the thing that we're proposing to do. So happy to answer other questions. That was a little bit long-winded for a fourth read, but just want to try to touch on a lot of the things we've heard.
Thanks, Michael. Just point of clarification for people here. What is the difference if you do have a flashing light there and a always-stop sign? Isn't it the whole purpose is to slow the traffic down? And what is the difference? Somebody reading.
So you're talking about the, the RFBs, the pedestrian push-button lights? Yeah, those are just an enhanced warning to notify drivers that there is somebody that's looking, looking to cross, but they're quite expensive, and we don't want to put them somewhere that they're not gonna be effective, or that they're gonna get hit constantly. So we don't feel that having them tucked behind parking on the curb or far away from, from the actual roadway would be effective. So we don't, we think this is what would be necessary in order to actually use those. And then the overhead beacons, like you sometimes see at intersections, you know, in this case, it would be an orange beacon, yellow beacon, so I don't know that that would be particularly effective in this location, just as a warning to helping pedestrians get across. And I also want to say that it's not just pedestrians that we've seen are, have safety concerns about this. There are car, plenty of car crashes that have also happened. So the warning lights help pedestrians, but they don't really do anything for, for vehicle-to-vehicle collisions.
Thank you for clarifying the hydrant, because Kirsten had brought it up, and it was hidden yesterday by the leaves. But also, when I went to speak to the young lady who has the groomer, and she was working really hard there, and there were a lot of dogs in there, and I get it, where the spot is, is right in the middle, and I know the state doesn't like that, but you are proposing some spots just down a little bit from her, because again, we just, we don't want to hurt anybody, any of their business with an unintended consequence.
Yeah, that's correct. So the two spaces that are in front of the dog groomer right now are short-term spaces, and so we are proposing to convert the next closest two spaces to be short-term as well, to help keep parking turnover. And the exact, you know, it's, it's in proposal, it's 15 minutes, because that's what the existing ordinance says. I realized that it's actually signed as one hour right now. The exact duration is sort of up for debate. I would say it's more of a Parking Services concern on what exactly the duration on that parking is. It doesn't really matter to Public Works, but we feel like having, maintaining two short-term parking spaces there would help, would help the businesses, so, you know, residents aren't parking there, you know, 24/7.
Appreciate it. And I did look into the Schofield Street possibility about approaching the owner there about, but apparently, they have plans for the whole property. So that's, even the parking there that's now on the side is not gonna be allowed. It's their property. It's the old greenhouse, if you're familiar with Cosco Marzullo's. Okay, thank you.
Can you just point out where the fire hydrant is?
Yeah, so the, the orange square all the way on the right is where the fire hydrant is.
To the right, I can see it, Michael.
And it's actually set back from the curb a little bit in some shrubs, so it, you know, I would not be surprised if somebody didn't see it when they went to park there. But yeah, we just have to show it the way, the way it actually is out there in terms of this. I recognize, again, people do probably park there constantly, but, you know, that's something that it would be an enforcement matter.
You know, some of the information that we've been getting, getting a lot of emails and calls about this, is that this, things have been tried before, but does anybody have, like, the recollection of what was actually tried and why it was removed?
In the history that I've seen, I, maybe I didn't go back far enough, but I didn't see that, and then, you know, wasn't able to go back, you know, any further in the last couple of weeks, but I haven't seen that. I'm not disputing if somebody says that's the way it was in their memory, I don't know.
Yeah, I kind of remember something there, like in the early 70s, but again, there's people here who are a lot older than I am that would remember that. Did you have a?
Don't look at me for being older.
Got any questions?
We have a number of speakers.
Sure.
Did you mean he could speak in the mic and?
Yeah, we just, let's go in order.
Yeah, well, Jim actually is the first to sign up.
Janet had nothing.
Oh, yes, yes.
Well, I was simply gonna say, I'm looking at my colleagues, because at our last meeting, I wasn't ready to vote, but it was, it was all process and procedure, the reason I didn't want to vote. But it seemed like the two of you might not have been on the same page about whether this proposal is the right one or not. So I am, I am looking to the two of you to see where you, where you stand on this.
Thank you. Ken, who's up first?
Jimmy Sanguina.
Oh, Jimmy.
I'm gonna pass for now. Okay, Jimmy Caparone. He's gonna pass for now. Okay, I am going to try and recognize over Zoom.
I don't know if it's working. Mr. Horlacher, Scott, can you hear me? And you can unmute yourself if you can hear me.
I don't think it's coming out.
Yeah, I don't think it's coming through either.
But maybe I could do it on my laptop.
Well, at the meantime, Todd Ladonia has signed up to speak on this.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning, Todd.
I'm one of the old guys at Fred.
I'm one of the old guys that Freddy's talking about. My family's been in this neighborhood for over 100 years, in two different locations. It doesn't show on this map, this picture, but my daughter actually owns a house that abuts the property in the corner of Schofield and Valley Road. I own a couple condos that abut the next door, which also abuts property on Valley Road. I own a house that I grew up in down the street on Valley Road, and I'm also the president of the St. Lawrence Club, which is in the picture there. Apparently, we're going to lose some parking because of this configuration. Just some history, not for the shock value, but just for the factual value. My grandfather was actually killed in front of our house, but hit by a car on Valley Road. My father was hit by a car in front of what is now the bicycle shop. At that time, it was a grocery store and a liquor store. So I have some historical knowledge of how bad this situation is. I think that, you know, this is a road that has been a main thoroughfare for hundreds of years. It was originally the Boston Post Road, in case anybody doesn't know. George Washington traveled down Valley Road. So it's a problem that, I don't know, has a good solution. I think the solution is, it becomes a major thoroughfare when there's an issue on 95 because everyone jumps off 95, jumps on the Post Road, and we know how the Post Road is to start with. So then suddenly, now that everyone has a GPS in their car, the only way to get to Stanford or around the situation is the only other access over the Mayanis River. There's, you know, there are four ways to get across the Mayanis River. One is at the end of Valley Road, one is at the Palmer's Hill Bridge, one is the Post Road Bridge, and the other is the Turnpike Bridge. Four solutions to, I'm not sure how many cars a day travel north and south over the Mayanis River. I'm sure it's an astronomical number. But the solution is slowing everything down. In the past, and not your Board of Selectmen, but other boards of selectmen have taken other parking spaces away. This is a commercial district, as I said. It's been a commercial district for hundreds of years. The small businesses that exist there, exist there, not just to serve the neighborhood, but to serve transient people that come by. At the St. Lawrence Club, you know, we have members from all over town and a few from out of town. So we do have a parking lot in the back. However, part of that is a residential lot that's a non-conforming use. You know, who knows what down the road will happen? The building itself has been there since 1946. The club's been in existence for 101 years. But the same things, the same functions, the same things have gone on there for, well, close to 80 years. You, and I understand the whole concept because I come in and out of Schofield Street dozens of times every day. It's a crapshoot, quite honestly, to half the time you're coming out, and you have to pay attention. And it's just simply a speed of the cars. That's what it boils down to. People are driving too fast, and you just need to figure out a way to slow everybody down. Again, I think eliminating any parking spaces at this point is a drastic thing, and I think that that's the thing you need to avoid at all costs. We lost a couple parking spaces down the street, in front of my house down the street. There were two parking spaces eliminated up there. Up on the hill on Valley Road, parking spaces have been eliminated, probably more than a half a dozen parking spaces over the year, and now you're talking about eliminating two. And the reality is, there's a parking space in front of the bike shop that is probably the most dangerous parking space because when anybody tries to come out of Schofield Street and look up the hill on Valley Road, you can't see if there's a car parked there. You can't see what's coming down. So you have to stick your nose out into Valley Road in order to make the turn. I think, obviously, pedestrian safety is the most important thing that you have to work at here. But you also need to be concerned about the businesses, and we're losing, we are losing local business districts in the town of Greenwich. And the reason why we're losing these local business districts, one is because it tends to be economically more feasible to have residential in these little buildings that have businesses in them. But you also have no parking. And the more parking you take away, the less businesses you're going to have. So I think that that's really what you need to look at. You need to look at ways to slow down the traffic, which could be making the road more narrow, making it into, you know, I hate to use the word, but some sort of a village-type of atmosphere where people are going to automatically slow down. People come from North Mayanis, and they hit the straightaway, which everybody's familiar with. There's water on both sides, there's a little pond on one side, and the Mayanis River's on the other side. And that's kind of a speed-up lane. And you come up, there's a little rise there, you come up over the hill, and all of a sudden, people hit that very residential area with lots of people walking their dogs and doing all kinds of pedestrian-type things, going 45 miles an hour. I mean, it's not a zone for that. So it's not just coming down the hill, it's coming the other way. So you need to look at this whole district, this whole area, and have, I think, a bigger plan for what you need to do on Valley Road.
Todd, thank you so much. And just to clarify about the spaces in front of St. Lawrence, we lose them during the day, but last time you said that they return at five, after 5:00? Is that correct, or did I?
Yes, so I think the way the ordinance is written, the short term is timed from like effort, you know, 9:00 to 5:00 or something like that, 7:00 to 7:00, something like that. I can't remember exactly how it's written. But so the spaces that are shown hatched in green, these two, and then those two today, those are short-term during the day, but at night, they're not enforced as short-term.
But you'll never be able to park, no matter what time of day, in the red spots.
Right, that's the proposed, yeah.
So you're losing, you're losing three parking spaces, and you're making two full-time parking spaces into 15-minute spaces. That's a big loss of parking.
Well, there's two, there's two short-term spaces there today, so it's just a loss of three.
Loss of three.
That's, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And, you know, I want to say that the parking is something that we would recommend regardless of the stop signs, just so, I don't remember if I said that before. So, yeah, just want to make sure that's clear.
Even the, I know the one in front of, that Todd just mentioned, which is the one that's the most dangerous, in front of the, it's front, actually, it's in the intersection. Todd, you mentioned, you said, did you say the one in front of the bike shop? So that one is illegal now. And so there is a legal one there, and so we've always seen two there growing up, right? And everybody's, and that is, but it's the legal spot that causes the problem there. And so that is, that will be enforced. But John's other spot there is legal, and that's not the problem. It's that one there. So that one is going to be illegal. The other one that's a problem is in front of the groomers because it's right in the middle of the intersection. But again, I feel for her because people go in there, they drop the dogs off, she's working really hard. So, you know, I know, we had this issue in Glendale, and so we took, because of the project in Glendale, we had, the state required we take two parking spaces out in front of Glendale Pizzeria. We worked really hard to get Frankie three more spaces instead of the two, just on the same side, down a few yards. So it's out of that intersection. So I'm hoping some, like, we can do something like that here for her because, again, I just don't want to, we get it. We have to do something here, right? Again, I saw something, an accident, a near accident, just less than 24 hours ago, right at that spot. So something, that is a problem, that space there. The other two spaces would be in front of the club.
So there's the two space, the equivalent of two spaces in front of the club would be converted into the short term.
Short term.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, you know, everything that is, you know, on the right of the sheet going northbound, people do park along that shoulder there. We're not doing anything. We're not proposing any changes any further up, but people do park there.
Okay. Thanks. Todd, for a second time?
Yeah, the one thing I think that we're forgetting about, too, is when you eliminate parking spaces off of Valley Road, essentially the commercial road, what you're doing is you're forcing those people to park in the residential area around the corner. You talk about the Wernerts that own the property on the corner of Schofield and Valley now, where the groomer is, they're building, he has a project, he's going to build in the back, and you're going to lose along that street essentially a half a dozen parking spaces, which my daughter will be happy about because she won't have to look at parked cars across the street. But what it's going to do is it's going to force people deeper into the residential neighborhood to park. And obviously, there comes a point of diminishing returns where Kirsten's business, people aren't going to park two blocks away and walk to the deli. The reality of that exists. But you're going to have big spillover from other businesses, and I don't need to signify anybody in particular because businesses change. As I said, where the bike shop is now, you remember, it used to be a grocery store and a liquor store. It's just going to cause that commercial spillover of parking into the residential neighborhoods where, at this point, it's a densely populated neighborhood, it's all multifamilies, it's multifamilies and condominiums, and there's truly not enough parking to start with. So the parking then will become more of a problem. So, thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Do you want me to try to get somebody on my laptop?
Scott, are you able to speak? I see you didn't unmute yourself, and you're on my computer. Can you speak, Scott?
So let me also mention real quickly that a couple of years ago, a person I knew who lived on Millbank Avenue was struck and killed. And the town, people who lived in those condominiums complained that they just couldn't see. And the town did eliminate a couple spaces there. And the neighbors said that vision is much better now. So just, again, it just comes, it comes back to, that's okay, that's, we have some people here still that want to speak, so. So, again, the main thing here is public safety. And the last thing, we're, as you could see, you know, if you've witnessed, last several years, we're very pro-business here, and we're trying our best to do as much as we can to support and promote businesses. You know, but before anything else, you know, it's your health and your safety, and that's, we have to do something here. So, you know, this is not the first time the spaces that are in the way or creating obstructions have been proposed to, have been eliminated. But certainly Todd's points are well-taken. Jimmy, did you want to?
Lyndy Urso is next on the list.
Who's familiar with this area.
Yes. Good morning. Let me just say first, I'm surprised that something of this consequence is only, only the neighbors are noticed. This is a big deal for town. I think it's probably one of the most traveled roads, at least backroads in town. It affects a lot of people. So I didn't find out about it until I went into Magery a couple of weeks ago, and Kirsten told me about it. That's the first thing. Second thing is, I think we're all talking about number one priority here is pedestrian safety. I just started looking into this. I spoke, I provided you guys by email, I don't know if you got it, something from the Federal Highway Administration. And it came to me because I work in Stanford, and they have this, yes, and they have this on Washington Boulevard. It's called a pedestrian hybrid beacon. Basically, it's a traffic light activated by pedestrians. I think it seems perfect for a place like this for pedestrians where there's not that many pedestrians in traffic. But they hit the button, there's a red light that's not red. So, and they say, if you read this, they say that's safer than the blinking lights because the blinking lights, people get used to it, and they just don't slow down. A blinking yellow light, but when there's no light and then it turns red, it's very effective in getting people to stop for pedestrian safety. I had a chance to speak with the young man from Traffic over there just now and asked him if he'd considered this. He said they don't generally consider something like this because they're generally for mid-block like in Stanford. But if you look on page eight, it says they can be used adjacent to side streets, like in this case, adjacent to River Road, as long as the crosswalk and the approaching users are clearly visible to the side street, which they clearly are. It's wide open there at the Magery, that corner. So they would see, people coming out of River Road would see the red light and see the pedestrians. So that seems to be the most logical solution for the pedestrian safety without any adverse side effects. I mean, the side effects of a four-way stop sign, we have no idea. People coming over, you're guaranteed to get some accidents coming over that hill eventually at some point, especially in the winter when it gets icy. Not to mention all the parking situation, the businesses it affects. I go to the groomer, we park right in front, drop the dog off, get back in. She's an amazing worker, entrepreneur in town, and this is going to kill her. I mean, most of the ladies that go in there are pretty elderly. I see them gingerly walking out. If they got to walk, you know, I don't know how far these new spots are going to be, that's going to really impact her business. But again, the number one concern is pedestrian safety. Something like this is very, very drastic, and I think it needs more study. The traffic guys haven't even considered this particular type of thing in this location, which to me seems like the perfect solution for something that's not heavily pedestrian traffic. So I would ask you, before you make such a drastic decision, to consider, direct the traffic people to maybe do a study on this particular type of solution. And in addition, look, I think Mr. Ladonia is right about that, that there's too much speed there, and that needs to be addressed. And I have seen an increased police presence in that, over that hump where he's talking about. Because I'm one of those North Mayanis guys that comes down the river, and people do pick up speed. And he's, the cop has been tucked in either by the utility there across from the river or just over the hill, and there should be more of that to slow people down. But this red light is absolutely the most common sense solution for pedestrian safety without any adverse impacts to the drivers and the local businesses. So I'd ask you to really consider that before you vote on something like this. Thank you.
Thanks, Lyndy. Green, green.
Green one?
Yeah, just press it down.
It was on.
There you go.
Okay, hi. I'm Sheila Phelan. I am a resident for 18 years in the Valley Road area. I am a member of the District 8 RTM, but I'm speaking as a community member. I think we all know how dangerous that intersection is, so I won't redo that. But I am in favor of slowing, addressing the speed. I don't know, and I'm not an expert, why we can't have some sort of a flashing light at that intersection in lieu of that. The stop signs, I've heard both sides of that. If it does, it does stop people and slow them down safely, I guess, but I also kind of understand going down the hill that it might be an issue. I'm not a business owner. I will kind of defer to the business owners about the parking. Coming out of Schofield, something has to be done there that's nuts, that intersection. But I really am in favor of a pedestrian, the flashing lights. I've seen them all over Old Greenwich. They're kind of elevated, and I talked to Kirsten about this. As a matter of fact, you press the button, the lights go on. Red lights might even be better. And also, I don't know if you actually could move that pedestrian crossing back just a little bit, enough so that you can see it if you're going to turn right. But nobody I know actually uses that crossing because they're scared to death of it. So at minimum, at minimum, we should take the expense of some sort of a flashing light at that intersection. And I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sheila.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Michael, a couple of questions, if you could just clarify. Thank you. When this, the four-way, when the four-way stop sign was proposed, my only concern was the first thing I thought of is, in the wintertime, right, when they're coming down there, if they, I got a ticket about 30-something years ago on the Post Road where Walgreens is, and that's not that steep, but I was trying, there was a red light there, and it was slippery, and there was a three-car crash there. And when you hit somebody from behind, no matter what the condition is, it's your fault according to the insurance and the police. So I'm very much aware of that. But of course, there's, we are talking about speeding, too. But you've heard the last two speakers about lights, and I know a lot of it is dictated by the state, you have to conform to that. Something like this, this federal highway solution here, is that something, would it fit into the guidelines, their state regs, to do something like that? Because, you know, I mean, either way, there's, you know... Because, you know, I mean, either way, there's, you know, would, if the light is there, would it still be slowing the people coming down the hill? Because again, I don't want to talk in circles if we're going to be talking about the same thing ultimately, if they have to stop there, because they're still, you know.
Yeah.
So what, how would that address that? Because, because again, it may not, it may not make sense, but I'd like to hear.
Yeah, no, the pedestrian hybrid beacons are a good tool in the appropriate location. We don't have any in town, but as you mentioned, there are some in Stanford. They are really intended for mid-block crosswalks, where you don't have a traffic signal at the, you know, the main intersection there. So it's, it's not something that is typically used, there might be some leeway in the regulations to put them closer to an intersection, but it's not recommended, because they only face the main road. So it wouldn't be facing the side streets typically. So if somebody would be turning from River Road, they wouldn't have the indications facing them, so they might not see that. And then, as you mentioned, if somebody's coming down Valley Road, down the hill, they're still going to be asked to stop at the red light when it's activated. So they are only activated when there's a pedestrian there. It's sort of a stronger pedestrian, RRFB, the RFBs we have in town, and people are familiar. This is, this is kind of between that and a full-fledged traffic signal, so it is a full red light that you have to stop for when there's a pedestrian there. And it's a much stronger signal. But, you know, obviously, you know, it comes with a big price tag, signals are, can be very expensive, six figures. And we would have to see if there are warrant criteria, that's something we haven't checked at this particular location, just as with regular traffic signals, there are warrant criteria that you have to meet. We'd have to check and see if we could even do that here. Typically, you try things like stop signs first before you go to a traffic signal.
No, and I understand that, but, so if it's just, the light is just affecting the main road there in Schofield and River Road, but there's stop signs, right? So wouldn't that, the combination of them, wouldn't it work?
There are, yeah, but typically, you don't put them at the intersections, because the stop sign, you know, you stop and then you can go, whereas with the red light, you have to be stopped the entire time the light is flashing. It's really, they're really intended for mid-blocks, the way that they're set up. There might be ways to design it where you can put it at the intersection, I'm not saying it's impossible, but it would, it would probably require a lot more investigation to see if it's possible.
Okay, and I mean, if, again, if it's a red light and you're coming down Valley from Orchard, you're still going to have to stop.
Correct.
So our fears are still going to be there, no matter what.
And only when somebody presses it, not all the time.
So, I mean, is there a way to double-check that and just look into that? I mean, we have to get something that we, we're all, I think every person in here knows something needs to be done, and I don't want to wait too long, because God forbid, there's going to be an accident, and then I'll take it to my grave that we didn't do something. So, again, and I don't, and that trumps parking, but I don't want to hurt anybody either. So, could we, you know, how long would it take to us to look into that and see if we, if that is an option for us?
I mean, we could try to take a quick look for the next meeting. It may end up having the same parking impacts, because we have to find a place to put the equipment, the masked arms. And again, we wouldn't want, we still wouldn't want people parking in the, in the intersection, so I think that part wouldn't really change on it. But, you know, we, it's something we can, we can take a look at. We did do some digging into other, we tried to find other locations around town that have the downhill condition coming to a stop sign, it's hard to find a perfect match for this location. But we looked at five other locations, and we didn't really see any, for the last five years of crash data that we have, we didn't see any patterns at the other places that we looked at. You know, rear ends do occur just, you know, they can happen at any intersection. So we didn't see any stronger pattern at these other places that indicated it's a huge issue. But again, we don't have a perfect comparison, because there's no stop sign here now.
I like exploring this option. I've been torn, it's not that I'm not for safety or not doing something, it's just this, there's no perfect solution here. I'm very concerned about the parking. I think I said that, if this is the fourth read, I said it on the first one. And then also, it's not a perfect, it's not a perfect four-way. And then you've got the residents there, and she was asking, am I the fifth stop sign? I can just imagine the confusion at a five-way, because that's what it's going to be, it's a five-way stop, it's not a four-way, it's a five-way, because you have the driveway that the Cavellos own. So I don't know that we've come to the perfect solution, and there just seems to be a lot of, you know, negative. But I understand what you're saying, Fred, I don't want to, I don't want to take anything to my grave either.
Well, this is clearly, this is not a partisan issue, right? I mean, very concerned, people can disagree about what the right answer is. So like I said, but, you know, the two of you have a power that I don't have, which is you can caucus. So, you know, in between, if we're not going to vote today, in between this meeting and the next meeting, you know.
Yeah, no, we can, did you want to speak, Jim? Sure. Well, if we can have that information as far as, again, we're trying every single option we have here. But at the end of the day, something needs to be done. Something, we've been put on notice too many times, and as you heard from Todd, he had relatives that were hit here, and I remember some of them that were hit. Jimmy, Santa Guida.
But I don't think Todd agreed to a five-way stop, did you? Okay, just being clear.
Jim, Santa Guida, we've had our property on Valley Road right at the top of the hill since the 20s. And not only has Todd had people that were hit, his dad and grandfather, which I remember, and my brother was hit at the top of the hill also, not as severe. But with these spaces being taken, I talked to the lady at the groomer after he left, and she's very concerned about losing that, because she does have older people that come in, where they're on walkers, and if they had to walk from back there, she said they're going to, she's going to lose that business. There needs to be at least a spot there for her, just as the bicycle shop would need a spot. I also have driven through Stanford and Greenwich, and right in front of St. Catherine's on Riverside Avenue, there's a, by the chapel, there's a crosswalk with flashing lights. There's one in the center of Old Greenwich, down by Ace Hardware. There's one in front of Old Greenwich School, and then there's one down by the church going down Sound Beach, and you know people's speed there all the time. So they're being used, they're yellow flashing, they're not the red flashing. So I don't, I feel that the red definitely works a lot better, because I'm in and out of Stanford, and I see that it, it's helping, and people do stop. And they would have a visibility, because right by the entrance at Cavellos, where the crosswalk is, there is a dead area that you have presently taken away that space. So you would bump it out, so people from River Road coming out would see it, people coming up and down Valley would see it, and probably coming out of Schofield, you would see it. But if you see a car stopped in the crosswalk here coming down, then you're coming out of Schofield, well, you're not going to go through the car in front of you. Also, too, there's a major problem, you know, it might even happen in front of Frank's house, Canavera's, which is adjacent to the St. Lawrence Club, and then you have Federoli's property on Valley Road. When there's a stop sign, and that backs up all the way to where we are, we're not going to be able to get in and out. With the flashing light, it happens mainly when there's pedestrians crossing, and it moves the traffic along. I'm not saying it's going to help slow down, but it'll move them along, and you won't get the car after car after car, they'll be down further, so hopefully accidents will be not as often.
Yeah, no, thank you. And I get it, and as you've heard, there's no perfect solution. And I don't like the backups either, but that's preferable to people getting hit the way it is now. But I agree, and that's why we're going to, we'll see if we can get some.
I'm for the flashing lights, stop signs, no flashlights, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Sorry, if I could just clarify one more thing about the hybrid beacons. So, yes, they, they help the pedestrians, but I just want to make sure that everybody knows, they don't, they won't really do anything for the vehicle-to-vehicle collisions, the angle crashes here. It's really a pedestrian tool, like the, like the RFBs. So otherwise, it doesn't have any impact on the vehicles, and we've, we've shown, or we've seen in the data that there is a significant crash problem, just between vehicles, not just the pedestrians. So we're happy to look into it a little bit further, like we talked about, but just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Michael.
We have Kirsten Butler and John Backstill signed up. Do you still want to proceed, even though the vote's not being taken?
How are you, pal?
Yeah, so there's, sorry, not used to this. Good morning, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks for hearing this a fourth time. Obviously, there's a little bit of fervor and feeling about this. I left a corporate job almost three years ago to take over a bike shop that's been a bike shop for 50 years in town, not for the money, because I wanted to, and I loved it, and I thought it deserved to be a bike shop. I will tell you, I've never worked harder. I love it, and it's fine, but I've never worked harder. And Kirsten probably works twice as hard as I do, because she probably works double the hours that I do. But point being.
She makes better egg salad, too.
Oh, yeah. I cross the street every day, multiple times a day. But, and you do take your life in your hands, so something needs to be done. Thank you for listening to the parking issues. It's extraordinarily difficult to do business in any town. Greenwich is cost prohibitive because of real estate values and rent and everything else, and that's just the nature of the town, and part of the reason we love it. But there was, someone at some point said there was a parking study done. I haven't seen anything about a parking study done, or limiting spaces, and how the parking turns being removed actually affects business. I mean, like, I did it back of a napkin, you know, not long ago. If you remove six to eight spaces, you lose 250 parking opportunities if you say the parking turns four times every hour, so 15-minute parking, which regardless of whether it's used or zoned as two-hour, it's probably more functional as 15-minute parking, because people are in the deli, people are at the groomer, people at me, most times they're in and out. But even losing three spaces, if you say those spaces turn 15, every 15 minutes, four times an hour, that's still 150 missed opportunities for someone to go to the deli, or someone to go to the groomer, or someone to stop to see me. So losing anything, you know, when we're taking away, it's still a net negative. So if we're not adding anything back, it just makes it harder for people to come and use the businesses. So I'd love to hear what parking has to say about that. Separately, I'm still unclear, I've heard three spaces being removed, I don't believe that, it may mark out that way on the map. When you walk it, it's not the same, especially now that we actually noticed there's a fire hydrant there, and there's probably going to be signage saying, "No parking there." So I think we need to do something to actually, we're taking away spaces, we need to add them somewhere else, which is not an easy thing to do. There is further back, so when you go north on Valley, same side as St. Lawrence Club, there is an area that says, "No parking, snow zone," or something like that. I don't know if that's current, or it's been evaluated, but we could add spaces there potentially, so that might be an idea. We talked about the cascading effect of if you remove spaces, we're going to have more cars parked on side streets. Corner of Schofield is getting developed, so spaces are going to be removed, so more spaces are going away, and nothing's being added, which is going to be difficult. Quick note, I get to see all the fun of the intersection, I literally have front row seat because I'm right on the hill. There's a manhole, this is a little bit of a sidebar, but there's a manhole coming down the hill, if you're going to turn right onto River Road extension, please move the manhole. Everyone's at the edge of traction, they're coming down the hill, they're hitting the brakes, because they're going to make a turn. People almost rear-end each there, rear-end each other there now, and there's no parking, there's no stop sign there. So guaranteed, you know, I could sell seats with how many rear-end collisions are going to be at that intersection. So it's, someone should look at that as well, it's just, it's not a great place to stop. There's already, you know, rear-ended, almost rear-end accidents all the time. I mentioned this last time, but on the enforcement side, if we did go with a four-way stop, I have a feeling, people being people, unless there's a cop sitting right there, they're going to park there anyway. So then your sightlines are affected, so you have a four-way stop, but it's not safe because cars are blocking your sightline. So you've created a four-way stop, but you've created one in an area that's not going to be safe, because how it maps out on paper and how actually people park is another story. So I don't know that Greenwich is going to have the enforcement to just make sure no one parks there, when they've been parking there for 100 years. Yeah, I'd just like to see other, other alternatives proposed, in light of what everyone else has said with blinking lights. Why can't we consider a raised crosswalk, like you have, like North Myannis? North Myannis is actually on Sheep Hill, it's, oh, sorry, Old Orchard. We have raised speed bumps. So why couldn't we look at a combination of raised speed bumps with a crosswalk light that slows people down? Maybe it's blinking orange or yellow all the time, and maybe it turns red, and there's a red light for traffic when people are crossing. I think that's probably more palatable. And talking about DPW, and talking about where the signs have to be, and you'd lose parking spaces, well, not if you put an arm up. So you could go side of the road, straight up, put an arm up, and your fixtures can go there, instead of just being on, you know, lollipop-type configuration. So that's my ideas, listening to everyone talk. That's about it.
John, thanks so much. And I know, everything you said, everything has said here, we'll look into. I know speed bumps and major roads like that, emergency vehicles, flyer department, EMS, they don't typically like that. But certainly, I think anything's on the table right now, we'll certainly follow up on it. Thank you. Is that, on that?
I think Kirsten.
Kirsten, okay, I think Kirsten gets the last word. How are you?
Hi. I did reach out to a couple of companies about what their suggestion might be. I did only get one quote back in time for this meeting. It was a suggestion for lights that are LED that can be seen a mile away, they only flash when somebody's going to be crossing the road. It also was recommended that a raised crosswalk would probably be a good idea as well. So I will leave this with you. But just one more comment on the parking, everything's already been said, but I don't see him here today, I don't know if he was trying to talk via Zoom, but there's a couple of physical therapists that are also next to John at the bike shop, and they rely on street parking, too. So if you only have two 15-minute parking spaces, you can't get physical therapy in 15 minutes. So, you know, that's, that's a loss for his business as well, because, you know, they're going to get tickets if they're there for getting their treatment. And I will leave this with you, just as a, this is all, this is, oops, sorry, this is an all-inclusive quote, there's things that can be removed, because the town could probably do a lot of it themselves, but just so that you have an idea.
Thanks for the research, Kirsten. All righty. Thank you. All right, so we will be having lots of sidebars on this one.
Important.
Yeah, it is, we want to get it right, so, thank you, Michael, appreciate it. Going on to the next one is, should be a little bit less controversial. Amendment to traffic ordinance, Schedule One, parking prohibited, Schedule 11B, 15-minute parking. Newly promoted Deputy Chief Jim Bani.
Good morning. So this was proposed November 14th. I believe that a lot of this is contingent on this plan. So my suggestion would be to suspend this until we get a plan up.
Absolutely.
So I would withdraw this now, and whatever legally you need to do.
Yeah, and then maybe you and I could take a walk over there, because something that John mentioned about north of the club, a little bit with a nose park, a nose zone. I've been there a million times, I can't recall that sign, but I'm sure it's there, so maybe we could take a look at it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, next up is a request to expand the municipal food scrap recycling program. And Julie DeShamps has been waiting patiently over there. Good morning, Julie.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Julie DeShamps, the Chair of Waste Free Greenwich. Thank you for considering our request. And before I jump into it, I just want to mention one more event that's coming up, and thank you, Janet, for the shout-out for our Monday event. But on Wednesday, the PTA Council Green Schools Committee is going to host Environmental Affairs and Waste Free Greenwich for merry, bright, and waste-free holidays. Get your waste-free tips for the holiday season. It's at Lunch and Learn on Wednesday, the 4th, 12 to 1. Thanks. So Waste Free Greenwich has been working with Environmental Affairs and Public Works to expand the town's voluntary food scrap recycling program. and limited regional disposal options. Now 40% of Connecticut's waste is tracked out of state and costs are escalating. In 2029, just five years away, the Peak Scale Incinerator, where Greenwich's waste is burned, will be shuttered. So we need solutions now. The reduction of wasted food through prevention, donation, and recycling is a low-hanging fruit, a promising solution to this crisis as food scraps make up a quarter of our waste stream. Our goal is to make food scrap recycling easy and accessible to all Greenwich residents. And our proposal features the use of secure, fully enclosed units for organics collection that offer controlled 24/7 access. The units would be located in Old Greenwich, Cos Cob, Central Greenwich, and Western Greenwich, and these are the locations that were most requested by residents in a recent survey. The list of specifics, station sites, is being narrowed down currently in consultation with department heads and other stakeholders. And thank you, Mr. Siciliano and Deputy Chief Bonnie for their input, as well as Greenwich Communities. All the locations were carefully considered using criteria that's focused on accessibility, safety, traffic, and cost. We expect that the program will be funded through an infrastructure grant through Connecticut Deep as well as the Sustainable Connecticut Community Match Fund. So we appreciate your consideration and we ask for your support of the grant application.
Thank you, Julie. It did get, somebody reached out, was concerned about a possible rodent problem with this and smell, and, which leads to my question about how often would these posts be taken away? Would it be, and as far as, you know, maintaining them and cleaning, it's a good question. And I wanted, I'm glad the person asked it to get it out there, so.
Absolutely. Thanks for bringing that up. So these bins are fully secure. They're made of stainless steel. I think I described them last meeting as Fort Knox, and they're locked at all times. Residents use an app to open them and either, based on what company we go with, it'll either open from the front or from the top. And then after designated a number of seconds, they'll close and lock automatically. So there's really no access points at all unless, you know, the user opens it with the app. And then they'll be cleaned during the hotter months on probably a monthly basis by the hauler. They have units in their truck for washing, and that'll be part of the contract. And they'll be, we'll start out probably two times a week pickup and see how that goes. If three times a week is necessary, then we can do that.
Thank you.
I had some people reach out with a number of questions, and I'm not sure if we have anybody that's signed up. One of them was about the cost because it's funded by a grant, but how much would this actually, you know, be costing, you know, every year? Because eventually maybe the town is going to have to pick up the cost. Have we considered maybe piloting at fewer locations? And then with the app, you know, anybody could, how would people get the app? Because somebody in theory, you know, could do something mischievous, right? Like open it up with the app but not really put food waste in there, put something else in there. So just sort of the security of the app and reading it that things are tracked. Some people were concerned about personal privacy, like knowing, you know, what you are actually putting in. And I think even reading it, you know, your usage patterns for, you know, using the app. So some people are concerned about like data privacy.
Okay.
Sorry, I threw a bunch at you.
No, no. So we, one company offers a registration process, and, you know, that would be limited data. There are probably just name and email, just so we, also if there's an issue, we can also reach out. The other company, everything is, you know, no names, no emails are collected. So it just depends what company we go with. The registration process, I think, is important just so that we have, can educate the public on how to use the bins correctly. You know, we have a whole education program that we're considering, including meeting residents on the site, showing them how to download the app, how to use it to access the bins, you know, what materials are collected in the program, you know, just answering any questions that they might have. And I'm sorry, what was the first question?
The actual costs.
The cost. So it really, it depends, right? So we're asking in our, for the deep grant, four, four locations, it would be eight units in total. But it depends how much then we can raise for the hauling. So there's a big range based on the number of units that we would secure, the number of locations, and then are we picking up two to three times a month, a week, sorry. And so it really ranges from, you know, one location with one bin, that would be twice a week service is, sorry, 5,000 a year to, you know, eight, eight, eight units at four locations, picking up three times a week is about 36,000. So it depends, you know. We're going to be a little bit flexible on, you know, what we can handle in this pilot.
Can I just, can I just chime in? I just want to point out to everyone, this is a voluntary program. So if people were concerned, they could still go to Holly Hill and take their food scraps there.
No, it was the concern for people who weren't, who were, were not having the best intentions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Not the people who were.
We've noticed, you know, our program's been going for four years now. It's a voluntary drop-off program. It's collected half a million pounds of food scraps since 2020. And we've noticed very little contamination. People really have the best intentions who use this program. It is voluntary. They're going, you know, making an extra step to separate their food scraps at home and drop it off. So we haven't heard in any other municipalities or from the companies of somebody, you know, maliciously downloading the app to do harm to the program, but, you know.
And I also want to chime in on the costs. As my father-in-law would say, this is a bargain at twice the price. If you look at what we're spending on waste disposal to remove this kind of waste from our stream, it's, this is, this is not very expensive. So.
So then this is a pilot because eventually the town would pick up, who would pick up the costs over the years? So this is just a pilot right now to see how it works?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the town would reserve the right not to go forward with it. And also, we could, if it's working out really well and it's doing what it's supposed to do, you know, it may help with the financial component of it. But also, you know, we're always looking at grants and things like that. So let's see, let's hope it works and support it.
Great.
So process-wise, going forward, it's, you want the three of us to sign a letter of support? Is that-
Yes, that letter's been prepared. As soon as, I can have it for you, as soon as the vote is taken.
Was there any public comment?
I believe Ms. Jansen wishes to speak.
Good morning, Lucia.
Yes, good morning.
How are you?
Good morning. I apologize. I didn't sign up to speak. I didn't realize. Okay.
Ten push-ups.
I'm not often here.
Ten push-ups.
Okay. All right. All right. For those of you who do not know, my name is Lucia Jansen. I've been a proud resident of Greenwich for over 25 years, and I am an active volunteer in our community. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today about the proposed food scrap program. I am happy to share that I am currently an enthusiastic and committed early adopter food scrapper and have been for the past year and a half. I believe in waste diversion, turning what would otherwise go to landfills or waste to energy plants into rich, nourishing compost that benefits our gardens and food systems. Today, I also speak as a member of the Board of Estimate and Taxation and BET Liaison to the Department of Public Works. At last week's Board of Selectmen meeting, Waste Free Greenwich presented a proposal to expand the current food scrap program to include affordable housing communities, parks, train stations, and neighborhoods. Waste Free provided a two-page handout at the meeting, and I believe the document was lacking in key, critical details evaluating and implementing the program effectively. First, the program was lacking in specific goals with associated metrics with those goals. The town membership, there was no town department specifically described or nonprofits, and there was a lack of implementation details.
Ken's going to sing.
Okay. Most importantly, there was lacking a short and long-term financial plan, including cost breakdowns and all revenue sources with describing scenarios. And finally was the long-term, the maintenance and the operational processes. I really did find it curious and lacking that the town handout had no department mentioned in the program's operation. I also want to observe, my opinion, that this proposed smart trash can program, as described in the handout, is not simply an extension of the current food scrap initiative. The new program is now requiring 24/7 sophisticated technology, these smart bins, at town-wide locations. They have new requirements of the participants that are not there today with using a smartphone, which is a very big change. Having to learn what is a QR code to open the trash can, you cannot just drop off your food scrap. You now have this specific step, and you have specific protocols for the disposal. On the back end, the program involves the town now maintaining and cleaning these, responsible for having clean, smart trash bins, technology support of the bins, managing a centralized routing control system, which is actually one of the big benefits, is to hopefully get more efficient on the pickup of the food scrap, and having haulers, new haulers involved two to three times per week. Given the complexity of the townwide proposal, I believe the town needs more detailed information before moving forward. To that end, I prepared a list of questions and considerations, which I have here as a handout, and I will email to you. And I will not go through them, but I would like to highlight things like which town department and other organizations will be responsible for the installation, maintenance, and education associated with the program? What are the specific short-term goals and metrics for evaluating the program's success? What are the long-term goals for widespread adoption, and how will these be achieved? What potential risks or challenges does a program present, and how will they be addressed? What resources and support are needed, from financial investment to personnel across the departments? How will the program ensure accessibility and participation from underserved populations? What are the detailed cost and revenue projections for the program over the next five years? Are there plans to generate new revenue, such as through compost sales or advertising on the smart bins? What data will be collected by the smart units, and which town personnel will manage this data? How and when will public feedback be gathered, and what methods will be used? What is the timeline for planning, implementation, and expansion? And finally, how will privacy concerns be addressed in accordance with town policies? These are just the highlight questions. So there are many, many more. I did find what appears to be good news, which is I conducted research on the Connecticut Deep Grant, and it is a grant that is on a rolling basis through January 17, 2025, giving the town ample time to carefully refine the proposal and ensure all critical components are addressed and disclosed. So, in sum, I want to express my enthusiasm for this potential program and the positive environmental impact it can have. However, I believe that gathering more detailed information and developing a comprehensive plan, written plan, will set us up for greater long-term success. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I wish you and your families a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the questions. Some really good ones there. I do, there was a couple there, specifically the underserved populations, how would you reach them? I think by them reaching out to Greenwich Communities was a great first step. I know when we started recycling in 19, a company in 1991, we reached out and we had the instructions in different languages and worked together. So I think, you know, that's those, there's some blueprints there already, but I think you've already made the first step there by reaching out to Sam and everybody at Greenwich Communities. But certainly some good questions there.
Okay.
And it is, it is a pilot. So we, it's not like we're, you know, we're locked in.
I appreciate it's a pilot. I think, though, even with a pilot, even more so, it deserves a written plan so that you understand what are the goals, what's the metrics, what's the pass/fail, who's involved in the decision if it's a pass/fail. I think there needs to be a lot of transparency. Because right now, the program is an early adopter program for people like me who are enthusiastic. We take the time. We're willing to really invest in understanding and implementing this program. But this is to implement it more widespread, widespread in the town, which I think is a great concept. It just needs more details. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I could appreciate the more, more detail.
Sure.
Myself. So I don't, I don't know, moving forward today, you know, is there time to flesh out a little bit more of the answers to some of these questions? Because I think they, I think they make sense being documented.
Yeah. And I think some of our, will be easily answered, and some I hadn't even thought of. But, you know, waiting two weeks just to get them, I think that would be, but if you want to say anything, Julie, right now, just in the interim, just to maybe answer some of them, or pledge to get the answers to them?
So a lot of these concerns have been fleshed out in our application to the grant, and that's kind of our step one, anyway. There's, you know, the implementation is kind of planned for September 2025. So there's months and months and months to, you know, work out any other details. But a lot of how this will, how this will run is already fleshed out in the timeline in that application. So-
Yeah, maybe it's just getting a copy of the application.
Exactly.
Exposed.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can't move on unless we have the funding, right? So like, the application for the deep grant is step one, right? And then, you know, going through the contract with legal and, you know, getting RFP if necessary. There's lots and lots of steps in between, but this is kind of step one.
So this is just an application?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, if, we can go on to have you move forward, but then revisit this in two weeks to get these answers, and they said maybe getting the application where some of those answers are already in there. Because I think there are very, most of them were very valid questions. So it's just getting it out there so people can see it. But certainly, we don't want to hold off.
Right. Our application is due Friday, December 6th.
All right. So we can, by, you know, endorsing you to go forward, we're not locking ourselves into anything. We could always back out if we didn't get sufficient answers, but I think the answers are probably all in there anyway.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Okay.
And we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Just, I just wanted to clarify, correct me if I'm wrong, what your, this pilot program is not replacing what we have, it's enhancing what we have.
Exactly.
So, anyone could still do what they, what they're currently doing, that this wouldn't...
Exactly. Yes, we've gotten a lot of, so we had a survey, 165 residents responded to it, and a lot of the feedback was, I work, it's very hard for me to, you know...
Limited access.
Yeah, to have access, and, you know, yes, I could go to Holly Hill on Saturday, but it's also very crowded, right? And it's, it's hard to park at all Greenwich Farmers Market, you know, you're only open two hours on Wednesday now, so, you know, it, the opportunities are limited as the program is structured right now, and it would be nice to be able to expand those opportunities for our residents.
Totally. Just need to get a little closer to the details.
Which, and you, you've mentioned that last time.
Yeah.
It was just to expand upon what we already have.
Exactly.
So people can access it in those limited hours, that window of time. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. We should put one outside of Holly Hill.
Just so we know, we're, we're gonna crash right into the 12 o'clock special meeting very soon.
I know, okay, we'll try and pick up the pace here. So, do you want to, is there a motion to approve the request to expand the food scrap recycling program, and then we'll revisit it in two weeks with those, for those answers?
Is that actually what we're doing? Or we're just signing the application?
Well, I think it is a vote.
There's an endorsement, there's a vote. There is an endorsement letter that has been prepared that you can sign today if you vote to do so.
So, we're voting to endorse the application?
That is the request.
Okay, so, yeah, we're not approving the expansion, we're endorsing the application.
Unless I'm misreading, Ms. Johnson, okay, but thank you.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you. So, Lauren Raven, I motion that we endorse the application to expand the municipal food scrap programming.
Janet Stone-McWiggin enthusiastically second.
All who's in favor, Fred Camillo is a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWiggin, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie and Sarah. Okay, next up, new business, but we already did item one already, Deputy Chief Pani. Next up is Joseph Leano and Dan Carlson from Parks and Recreation for the first read for our proposed fees for 2025.
So, we're gonna let Dan make the presentation on the fees, and I'll take the next one.
Thanks.
All right. Good morning, Board of Selectmen. For Selectmen, so, yes, we're here to, to present the 2025 fee change proposals for Parks and Recreation. So this is an annual process for us, every year we come to the Board of Selectmen with recommendations for the fee changes for our various programs, activities, and facilities. Just a quick background, you know, our fee changes are determined on a number of factors. You know, we make sure to review our expenses of, of, of last year. We look forward into seeing what minimum wage increases and labor costs that we have to deal with, as well as comparisons to other similar operations and municipalities. And we also want to strive and, and make sure that everybody knows that we try to strike a balance between managing these rising costs while still ensuring access to our programs, you know, for, for everybody. We really want to make this accessible for everybody within town, and I think our staff does an excellent, excellent job of balancing that. So this is only just a first read for us. We, we presented this in the packet for review, but we're also going to be posting this on our Parks and Recreation webpage, and so we'll make sure to take in any consideration that we hear from the Board of Selectmen, as well as any residents that would like to reach out to us directly to give us any comments. It's a 20-page document, so there's a lot in it, so we do have a few weeks until we come back for the next read, which we're planning on doing so on December 12th, which is when we would ask for the vote. So from here, going forward, I encourage everybody to take a look at it, and even now, take, willing to take in any questions or comments from now going forward, so just a quick little highlight there.
Thank you, Dan. Yeah, we do this every year, and, you know, some fees didn't go up, other ones went up minimally. I know you take great pains to not, to make sure that we're not pricing ourselves above other municipalities, and I know it doesn't get much focus now until the session starts in Hartford, but the non-Grenwich registered vehicle fee, it went up two, from 200 to 225, not a big difference, and I know, I've seen other towns, I think they were a little bit more than that. So we, we try to stay under, you know, other, other municipalities whenever we can, but I know, you know, a lot of work goes into this, I, you know, from my days in Parks and Rec, I appreciate all you do.
Thank you very much. Like, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I think some of the ones that stayed flat are probably the less popular activities, like the skate park, and who knows how many people play softball anymore. With the next meeting, you know, just based on our usage, what do you think this is gonna yield us, like, net? So I see all the individual fee increases, so assuming the same number of people are gonna apply for beach passes and, you know, go and do all these activities, what's that increase gonna mean?
Yeah, we could work, we couldn't work to get an estimate for that. I mean, I just, I don't have it on hand, but we certainly have the data to back it up, and yeah, there's various trends depending on the sport, as you mentioned, but some things are a little bit more stable, like the beach passes, so we can get a rough number for you before that meeting.
Great, thank you.
So I'm gonna echo my colleagues. Thank you so much for all the work that has gone into this. This is, this is a lot of work, a lot of moving parts, and as Fred mentioned, most of the increases are pretty small. I did notice there were a couple of areas where there were bigger increases, like in tennis, it seemed like there was some bigger increases, and then notably, community use of, of rooms, there was no charge last, until last year, and now there's going to be a charge, and I'm just wondering, is that gonna disadvantage any groups or nonprofits in town? You know, because some would be perfectly able to pay a small fee, but others probably don't, they don't have necessarily membership dues, so that, that was a question and concern.
Yeah, so typically with the room rentals, they were actually, nonprofits were actually incorporated in the other fee rate, the higher one, and this is the first year that we broke out a fee for them separately at a much lower rate. So they were always, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, but they were always paying at, at the higher rate, and then we decided, you know, to try to help out with the local community to separate them out.
Okay.
And, and get them at a lower rate, to your point, is that they don't have a lot of revenue generation, they do a lot for the community.
Okay.
So it, yeah, it didn't look that way on paper, but it actually is a benefit for them.
Well, thank you for clarifying that. It didn't, it looked like, it looked like that they hadn't had a charge before, okay, but that, that clarifies that.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks. We'll see you in a few weeks. As always, we'll listen to any feedback, but I know you take great pains to be very fair with us, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Hello, Joe.
Good morning. So, stand before you to talk about a dog park proposal that was brought to the department by some community members, and a survey or walk-around that you did with some community folks, and I think Liz Eckert is here this morning from the BARM Neighborhood Association. This is an area that's been looked at a few times. It has some advantages and some disadvantages because of the location, but at the end of the day, I think what we're here to say is that we put together this little packet that each of you received, and, and it's been in the Board of Selectmen packet for the public view, to start to look at the process of, is this a viable location? Can we get this, can we get the, can we get the approvals that we need through various town agencies? And at the end of the day, can we bring it back to the Board of Selectmen with a complete, you know, with an answer, is this, is this a location that will work for the community and also work for the operation that we support? So I think, you know, this is just the first stab at just trying to get it on the table, make it public. We've already received several comments by email, some good folks that do a lot of good work in Byron Park, Myrna Gardner and her folks from, who take care of our pollinator garden, and they're all friends, and they all have opinions, and, and we cherish those opinions because it does make, could make a better package on what they see. So, we have a couple of tasks in front of us. We're just asking you to kind of endorse us to move forward. We don't need a formal vote, but what we will do is come back at the end and, and give you our findings. We have a couple of town departments that we would need to, we would need to go in front. Obviously, if we're gonna have a dog park that's gonna have dogs off-leash, we'd have to get the Board of Health permission to have the dogs off-leash in this area, and that would be one of the next stops. We also have a planning and zoning component that we would have to talk with Pat LaRoe about, which we have, and what we would have to do to file for that. We may need some assistance to do that, because obviously, we're not, we don't do a lot of land use filings, but there might be some folks that willing, dog-friendly folks out there willing to volunteer and help us with the land use applications. I have the complete file for when we did the Grass Island Dog Park. I don't think the operationally, the operation side of where we have to go, who we have to speak with has changed all of that much, will be probably follow that model, and at the end of the day, we'll come back at some point and say, it looks like it can go, and maybe these other issues, but it does have some limitations. We talked about parking, it is more of a walk-up park for the neighborhood folks. There's, we will provide a handicap space in the location of the park, we'll be very cognizant about the aesthetics of the way it looks now, and not trying to convert it into something else. I mean, I think there's a lot of great features there now that would help us, you know, manage the, manage the area with, for the dogs, and I, also for the residents. So I think there's a few things that we need to accomplish. It's, there's a lot of work to do this, and I just want to make sure that the Board of Selectmen could give us an endorsement so that we'd spend our time wisely in moving this project forward and seeing what the end result is.
Thank you so much for doing this. As you remember, in 2000, I was one of four people that started the original project, and it took five years, and we heard all types of crazy things, why you can't have a dog park in Greenwich, home values are gonna go down, dogs are gonna be attacking people on the streets, none of that happens. And what we also find with the dog parks, our dog park and ones in Rye, Portchester, Rowayton, Norwalk, I've visited all of those many years, they tend to be neighborhood parks, people walking up there, people usually don't travel far for a dog park, unlike pickleball, a little travel. So, you know, we, the parking we have at Grass Island is way more than we need there for that dog park. This one probably lacks a little bit of it, but again, a lot of the people, you know, when I was walking there that day, that, I walked upon, and I said, wow, this is a great place for a dog park, it's contained, it has the walls there. I reached out to Liz and Irene LaRusso and Joe Kantorowski, the BNA, just to make sure, and they, they gave the blessing to move forward, that didn't have any concerns. I did speak with Myrna yesterday, and she wasn't against it. She's, she had some questions, like the back wall, and you and I went over this, the dry wall, you gotta keep it consistent with that, and our, our intent is to keep it as, in as natural of a state as possible, to make it very consistent with that. She also had questions about maintenance, and I knew a little bit about that and told her that it's not a huge thing for the town, we, you know, we have to do a little bit of work there, Parks and Rec, but it's, it's, you know, judging by what the, the history since 2005 at our other one, we also have done community-based cleanups led by citizens there, I've taken part of them, and then just as long as they, you get the, you know, approval from Parks and Rec, the gate, she asked about the gate in the front there, is it gonna be consistent? Yeah, and our, our whole point is not to, to throw like, you know, the metal fences all around there and make it look horrible, it's a beautiful area, and this is basically will be, you know, it's gonna end up being mostly for people in Byron to walk up there, but if somebody did wanna drive over there, that's why it would be, you know, an ADA space there, and, you know, for those who like to walk like me, you park in the parking lot, and you walk around there, and make sure you bring your leash until you get into that, we'll certainly have the rules posted there, and that was another thing, you know, we, we won't go sign crazy, we'll have just as much as we need, but it's definitely, you got my blessing to go forward and to keep looking at it. And also, important, the, we have a, the donor from the last one is ready to go with this to, to fund the improvements to make it a dog park.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, because it's like the 30,000, you know, did you fit the expense to meet the, the gift? Like, I'd be concerned with your cost estimates, that's what I would like be concerned about.
No, I, I think we're...
I'm also concerned about the parking. I think I'm always concerned about the parking because you need your beach pass if it's beach season to get past that gate to park there, so would someone have to say, I'm, I'm just here to take my dog?
People are taking their dogs in today, so, I mean, even, even during the summer, people access the park with their dogs, so it's not, it shouldn't be a big issue. We, we are combining some of those spaces over by the entrance way. I mean, obviously, they're used by our, a person that works at the booth and pickleball, tennis players, and, you know, we're adding another component now, but, you know, people are the kind of creatures of habit, they, they go earlier in the morning, you know, they do certain things at certain times. It's not the ideal parking situation. I mean, Fred, you're correct, we have more spaces than we need at Grass Island, but those also service the boating operation, but I think what we might find here is that people that are kind of walking to the park, there's a number of units across the way from the, from this little entrance, that, you know, people in those condos there and stuff, so they might be, you know, they might be looking at it a little bit more user-friendly, that they can go right across the road there. I mean, it's, it's not the ideal situation parking-wise, but there isn't an ideal situation that we've looked at. When we first started this venture, and Fred will remember, we looked at 14 locations in the town of Greenwich to support a dog park. We ended up at Grass Island, highlight of the, of our, of our tour, because mostly all the other, a lot of the other areas had issues with either parking, or neighborhood issues, or fencing, or it was just, we were just getting chased throughout the whole town. We did spend an enormous amount of time looking at all of those locations, and I still have all those files with all those checkboxes, does it have parking, does it have water, does it have, you know, I mean, it's, it's just, it's just the way it is, but I think, I think this could be used differently. A lot of times, I mean, look at people in New York City, they don't drive up to a dog park and park, they walk from their unit to, to the closest place, or a place where they wanna meet a friend, or it's, a lot of it has to do with the socialization, not of the dogs, but of the people, and, so we'll see. Well, I mean, it's a, it's a good, it's a good to explore this, we may find out things we don't know about it already, and obviously, we have people making comments, which are great, great opportunity for us to kind of hear what they have to say. These are the people that use the location, they live in the location, and they have, they have, you know, great pride in their location, so, I mean, it's good to hear this stuff, and, and we can, we can adjust. I'm not overly concerned about the budget estimate, I think that the estimate, the amount of money that the gift is for, as is noted in here, $30,000, could cover the major expenses there. Obviously, the annual reseeding of the, the grass that's there, cutting the grass that's there, which we currently do now, I mean, you know, we, we have things that are going on there now, this will just maybe accelerate that a little bit, but, I mean, I think we can internalize that and handle, handle that from, from our own standpoint.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say thank you. Likewise, there's, I appreciate all the work that has gone into this. I appreciate that you're reaching out to the Department of Health and to Planning and Zoning. I do have a question, and Sarah's unfortunately not still in the audience, but do you need to reach out to Environmental Affairs? Is this also a coastal overlay area?
That'll get reviewed through Planning and Zoning.
Okay.
We've already talked to Pat LaRoe about that. The site plan will get an overlook from the, at Environmental Affairs.
Okay. And then, and then I have a process question, which is, I assume this is a first read, we're gonna take this...
This is just, it, well, it's not coming back in two weeks.
Oh, okay.
This is just to encourage them to move, to greenlight them going forward, because there's, as we did in 2000, there's so many, in fact, it'll be a little easier this time because those questions were answered then, but it's a new location, so we want to make sure we're answering all P&amp;Z's concerns, Health Department, and we're still listening, you know, a couple people reached out, like I said, the last couple of days, just to asking some questions that you've heard repeated here, so...
I don't see it's coming back for several months, because we have to go to the Board of Health, we have to get this application in front of Planning and Zoning, it'll take their review. I mean, there's a bunch of things we need to do. At some point, if we get those green lights and all those, we'll come back, obviously the board has to approve the gift, and you have to, you know, and, and all of that, so we, we, we're just the crawling phase at, at the moment, so, or running, walking, running, dog park, running.
From the Yogi Memorial we did in 1996, so it's kind of, kind of fitting.
Okay, but this, so this, in other words, this is not like greenlighting to an MI? Okay, all right.
Yeah, and we may find out that we don't need an MI here, Pat, because it's not, it's a park within a park. Grass Island was a different situation, because the area that we were putting the dog park was park and conservation, conservation designated, so we've had a brief conversation with Pat LaRoe, he's, he's thinking, well, we don't need an MI, but we will need a site plan application that'll get routed through all of the planning and zoning... that'll get routed through all of the Planning and Zoning agencies.
And that's where we have, we had a good citizen last time help us, who's still around, helping everybody, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We did have one resident sign up to speak on this issue. Should we recognize him, or? Oh, I'm sorry, Liz, I haven't seen you on the list.
Liz is here.
Okay, Liz, you can speak first.
So just at the end, if you'll just give us that acknowledgement to go.
Yeah, absolutely.
What do you, formal vote, just a yes?
Yeah, we'll do, well, I motion that we, the Board of Selectmen, encourage you to further this process, to get the approvals needed to establish a second dog park in Greenwich.
Lauren Raven, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camello's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
And then Liz. Now we got two Buffalo Bills fans here.
Go Bills! All right, am I already live? Hi, everybody, I'm Liz Eckert. I am now the Chair of the Byram Neighborhood Association. This is my first speaking thing since becoming Chair.
Congratulations.
I just wanted to say, personally, I'm hugely in favor of this, I'm a huge dog person. In the spring, Fred had approached us, Joe Kantorski and I went over to the park, and we looked at the area, and just a little bit confused, because the area that I looked at was vastly like overgrown and behind a stone wall. And then, since the plans have come out, people have said to me, this is the secret garden, and it's a beautiful idyllic area. So I think while the community has, you know, really 75% of the people we surveyed said they are very much in favor of having a dog park, I would like some more community input before we fully dive in, but I think opening the conversation is great, and like I said, I'd be hugely in favor. So we'll see where this goes, but I do want to respect everybody's opinion in the neighborhood, and that's it.
That's good leadership, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Liz. Okay, and thank, and thank you, Joe. I don't see anybody in here, Ken. Okay.
David, if we're running a bit behind, so if you could make this a brief remark, please, that would be much appreciated. Thank you very much. David, you have to unmute. David, I'm going to have to count you down to about 10 before we move on.
We'll come back, because we really have to, we're already late for our special meeting.
All right, thank you. We can move on to Sam Romeo, please.
Sam, one second.
Good afternoon. I'm here today to bring up some concerns that came up during our proposal for affordable housing on Strickland Road. And the neighbors, during our public hearing, had some safety concerns about the intersection, especially around the parking lot and, and the bridge area. I didn't make any formal design plans or, you know, submit to the board, but I did write down and made some notes during the public hearing on their concerns, and I'd been giving it some thought and had been spending some time at that intersection. And some of the things that they brought up, we had planned on doing if we were going to be moving forward with our construction, as far as sidewalks go and the intersection itself. And today, I'd like to, you know, suggest some improvements and have the town traffic engineer look at doing some modifications and improvement to that intersection, because coming out of the railway station, heading towards the parking lot, that turn is a really sharp turn coming out of, from underneath the bridge. And I think if we can move back the stop line a little bit further and widen that and make that curves not so dramatic, it would help the traffic flow also. Also, on the opposite side of the parking lot side, where we're going to do our development, we should have a sidewalk. And we had planned on moving the construction further in and having a sidewalk along Strickland Road. So I think there are some modifications to be made to really improve the situation there, especially underneath the bridge. I think it's pretty obscene to see plywood alongside the sidewalks when you come under that bridge, to, I think the plywood was put up to protect the residents from cars splashing water onto the way they're walking underneath the bridge, but that surely doesn't look like Greenwich to me, to have plywood there alongside the sidewalk. So certainly, we could do something to improve that, just the aesthetics of it. But all in all, the traffic engineer could go to that intersection, take a hard look at it, and see if we can improve the safety conditions here with sidewalks and maybe make it more easy to traverse the area. And then further down on Strickland Road, we own the property, 85 and 87 Strickland Road, and coming out of our driveway, there's a sightline problem looking south towards, or east, I guess, north, towards the post road. There's, and the town right away, there's bushes that block the sightline coming out of our driveway.
In the town, towns?
It's in the town right away.
Can you, yeah, just if you send a photo over and we'll get it to DPW and, and it's, I assume it's not in Parkland?
No, 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 it's, it's along the Strickland Avenue, Strickland Road. But, but I think the concerns that were brought up by the residents, I think they, they should be addressed. We were going to address them during our, our construction, but I think having pulled the project, I would really like to see the town take a second look at this, and maybe they can address those issues that the residents have brought up during that public hearing. That's all I wanted to bring forward.
Thank, thank you. Okay, thank you, Sam, appreciate it. Next up is the Board of Ethics report, and the Chair, Walter Barry is here, waiting patiently.
Well, I should have given you a time estimate.
Yeah, poor Paul. Sorry about that.
You know, as far as I know, this is the first time in 60 years that the board is asked to have a face-to-face presentation of our report, and we have all the members of the board here, we had everybody coached to try to be efficient and only use about two minutes per recommendation. We have six recommendations. We were hoping we could get some feedback from you, but we don't have any action items that we need you to take. So we had a Plan B when I was first talking to Lauren. There's an FOIA exception, that members of one board can attend a duly-called meeting of another board, and the Board of Ethics has a meeting next Wednesday, regular meeting, so it's already noticed. I can put you on the agenda, we haven't put out the agenda yet. If you would be able to come to the Board of Ethics meeting, I think we could get through our presentation there. We don't need you to take any action today formally, so it's just really a dialogue. We've been making recommendations over the years for a number of things, and the list is getting kind of long, and we'd like to sort of figure out which ones are practical and which ones aren't, and get some feedback from you, what we might do to implement things better. So that works, it's 5:30 next Wednesday.
The fourth?
Yeah.
Five thirty, okay, yeah. There's two and possibly three other things, but 5:30 would be the first one, so I can be there for a little bit.
Yeah, we'll put you right on the agenda, right, first thing.
Thank you.
Yeah. Does that work for everyone? Great, I think that's a, that's a good solution.
Okay, thank you so much, Paul.
You said, where, where is it?
Pardon?
Is it by Zoom, or is it in person?
Usually across the room.
Oh, it's in person, yeah, it's an in-person meeting. It'll be in the Gisborne Room.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you for your patience. That was painful, so, sorry about that. Sometimes you get a lot of these items and they, people want to be heard, so, but thanks again. See you guys on Wednesday. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, next up, we have a.
I don't like public speaking, so this works for me, actually.
Our apologies.
No. Zach, is that good? That's amazing. My name is Shira Janet, I'm here representing the Chabad of Greenwich Jewish Center. We have Hanukkah coming up, which is like a triple whammy this year, with Hanukkah and Christmas and New Year's, all within the same week. There's a lot going on, and we have two requests. The first, sorry, the first is to build the same menorah that we do every year, it's about 12 feet tall, and we usually put it up on the corner of Arch Street and Greenwich Avenue. Starting last year, we got like an LED lit up one, which looks really beautiful and it's really bright, and it's lovely to see it coming down the avenue. We appreciate that you always let us put it up, and we just wanted to officially request it going up again this year, as well as being able to use town power to light it. Last year, we kind of informally got approval to do that, but there were issues if, like a police officer came by, or if something, you know, if somebody noticed it, asking if we had written permission, so we just kind of wanted to get official permission to plug in where the lights are plugged in by the trees right next to it. We tried it out last year and it worked perfectly, we were able to safely make sure wires weren't in the way. So that's our first request. Sorry, just a second. Our second is obviously contingent on the event being approved by Parks and Rec. We would like to request semi-road closure for our hoping to be January 1 Hanukkah celebration and concert. We would ask for the same plan as last year, where we closed Arch Street up until Bowling Place, and then have the right side of Greenwich Ave closed off, while keeping the left side open to traffic flow. We felt like last year it worked out really well for everybody. We didn't feel like there was traffic stops, we, it worked really well, and the pedestrians and the kids were all safe also. So we, God willing, look forward to approval and the event happening. It's, as always, open to the entire community, and we hope that everyone can join your local Jewish community to celebrate bringing more light into the world together. Thank you.
Thank you, Shira. What, when would the first day of Hanukkah, I haven't checked the calendar?
It's Christmas Eve.
Christmas Eve, I won't be here, but.
It was a little tricky to.
Yeah, that's a tough one, yeah.
To figure out the day for the concert, just because it's also Christmas break and people are away, and we want to be respectful of also people celebrating Christmas, so we thought January 1 was, while tricky, still fun, and people are coming back January 2 for school, so we're hoping to have a bit more of a crowd, so.
And you got to go up in the truck, because I'm going to be in Japan.
We know how much you like heights, so we got an extra big checklist here.
Nice, yeah. Rabbi, Rabbi Derron, he has bruises on his arm from, from me holding. But yeah, but no, it's always worked out well, and it's a, it's a great community event, and people really look forward to it. So this is not time-sensitive, so we could.
I think we're looking at.
There's still a few details that need to work out with Parks and Recreation, so we can hear it again, and it fits perfectly in the calendar, so.
This is kind of just to introduce the idea to you, and then we can figure it out. Cool. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shira.
I actually, well, I have a couple of questions, because every, every, this is wonderful, it's, it's a fun celebration, and you'd think that since we do it every year, that I would remember from year to year how we go about this. Don't you need to go before the, get permission from Greenwich Police and?
Yes, they're working on it.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're working on all the forms right now.
That's what Ken is referring to, okay. Usually, it's in Fire and Police, they're, sometimes when they, they come here, they've already done it, sometimes they're in the middle of doing it, but we're always working together on it.
Understood, okay. But I just wanted to be reminded.
That's one of the reasons we're waiting for the approval. We just wanted to get the first read here, but those details are set to be finalized for the second read.
They also like to hear that I requested the road closure already, so it's good for me to be able to go to them and say, I already spoke about that, so.
And then in terms of the electric supply, I mean, I don't know how we would be experts necessarily in granting that permission. I'm assuming that Public Works would weigh in and say, yes or no?
Yeah, there's a light source there, it's right in the middle of that transplaza park, where there's water source there, there's electric.
Yeah, same where like the tree lights are, are all plugged in, that's, it's right next to where we put it up, so.
Okay.
It worked out well, which is why we thought we'd just officially request it this year.
Great, well, thanks for your patience with my questions, all right.
Problem at all, all right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Shira. Okay, consideration of proposed 2025 Board of Selectmen meeting dates, this is a first read, we can go over it. This is always subject to change, if something happens, somebody can't make it, we've always accommodated whoever it is can't make it, so.
Standard second and fourth Thursday, we would be in the meeting room, except for two dates here, the April 10 in the co-op room, also is a possibility of a 7 o'clock in the meeting room if we wish to. I know you want to do a meet, night meeting every now and then, but it's something to consider, but it's perfectly standard and reservations are made in the rooms, so.
Yeah, thank you, I know originally, we were going to try and do like a traveling show a few years ago, but to get the buildings, it becomes costly.
Didn't we both that animal acts couldn't travel through?
Well, you actually haven't denied that, so.
Oh, okay. Oh, my, oh, my.
All righty.
But on this note, so you, you already noted that our next meeting, our first meeting in December will be at 1 o'clock, unlike our usual 10 o'clock.
Yeah, is that okay with everybody?
Fine, but I also, while we're at it, do we want to meet on December 26?
I don't think we have to, and we could certainly.
We can certainly put that on the agenda to cancel that meeting if we, if we wish to, I.
I think.
Can we just put that on next week, next month?
Okay, so we can't, we can't vote on it.
Because I think everything will be, all the pressing business can be wrapped up at that meeting, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank, thank you. And then we have one more item, but the gentleman is not here.
He is online. Mr. Wold, if you wish to unmute and speak about your request, if not, we can just consider it on our own. David, are you there?
Okay, we could.
This is, this is a standard flag request, and we, we would be able to come back for the second read, so.
Right, and again, just so you know, I'm okay with this, the, but he has to understand he is responsible for remembering it, bringing it, storing it, he could leave it here if he wants, but last time, he, one of those ones he requested, he was upset with us, saying we were responsible, we're not responsible. Everybody who comes to us always reaches out to us ahead of time, and I, he seems to forget that, so we'll remind him when he comes here next time.
But we would put it on the calendar.
Yeah, it would be.
For, for the public to be aware.
Yes, absolutely.
And there's, there, there's no proclamation associated with it.
He can request one if he wishes, but he has not as of yet, but he has for other ones we've done. I think we're doing one already in early, in early December, I think for the National Guard, if I'm not mistaken, I object to the calendar, but he can request a proclamation if he wishes, as anyone else can, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just going to say, I'm happy to support this. I mean, I have, I have nothing against the Space Force. I do wonder, do we have Space Force veterans in our community?
I do not believe we do, but there are others besides Mr. Wold, including Chief Heavy, who have pushed for this recognition.
Did he push for it, or did he just say it's a legitimate thing?
I think he said it would be, he'd like to see it on the list.
Okay, all right.
All right, I just, to me, I just, I mean, I love, I love our flag ceremonies, but it's a little bit sad to me if it's simply a pro forma, you know, a town employee puts the flag up and, you know, without fanfare. It's nice to have some sort of.
We can open up to any veterans who'd like to come of all kinds, it is an armed forces branch, so.
If he stops coming and loses interest in doing this, it'll be on him, because certainly, we can't be at all of these things. We've opened it up to a lot of flag raisings, and, which is great, but again, it's, the town is not responsible for that. It's, you know, when St. Patrick's Day, the Hibernians reach out to us, Columbus Day, the St. Lawrence Club reaches out, they, they do all of that. So we just say, yep, we'll be there, you know, you want a proclamation, we'll do. I think he gets the wrong idea and was very upset that we didn't promote things, and so that's not our job, and it never has been the job of the town. So as long as he understands that, then we're, we should be good.
I believe he does.
Okay, all righty.
We have one person sign the public comment, if we have time.
Okay, it's going to be very quick.
Peter, you're going to have to be very brief.
Yeah, we're already 18 minutes late.
First time for everything, I suppose.
Peter Alexander, Byram River fan. I noticed that we have some federal money in place, and I wanted to make you aware that the anadromous and diadromous fishing season is coming, and we could use that funding to cleanse the area and lane, which I presented to you a couple of years ago. I know it'll take a little more, but I'd like your encouragement on it first, since all three of you here together, because I've been dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers, who's really not aware of the title influence, and I think it'd be a real win for all of us. So if I could come to the next meeting and make a formal presentation, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, have you reached out to, again, Conservation, Environmental Affairs, and, and, again, because we don't, we went through this before, where you're asking us to do something where we don't have that information, and we, every time you've brought something, to do something on town property, the town attorney has opined several times and said they, and the risk manager has said, no, we don't do that. So I don't want to waste your time or our time if, if you haven't done that, so.
Yeah, we've been doing it for 15 years since that storm, so.
Okay, yeah, reach out to them.
I'll be happy to charge it back up.
Reach out to them first, this way we don't, because otherwise.
Well, just a wink and a nod, because I'm dealing with the Army Corps people.
We can't, there's no winking and nodding.
It's on record.
But I mean, just to.
We want to save tens of thousands of lives to fish.
But just to, sorry, just to, just to pile on to what Fred is saying, our town legal has already said no, so.
Yeah, they're very, they said no, risk management. Unfortunately, sometimes even, we, all the three of us sometimes have, we have, we think are really good ideas, and we get shot down a lot, and it is nothing you can do. I mean, I.
So the legal department's running the town, you're not.
Well, I, we don't have the response, we don't have the authority to, why we didn't even have a legal department?